Welcome back everybody into another backtesting session. If you remember we left the last and last video with the Friday 18th of March and we're coming now with Monday the 21st of March approaching the end of the first quarter and the end of the month. So let's see what do we have planned for the week. So today at 5:00 we have a Powell speaking. Not really sure if I'm going to trade it unless there is really some clean price action and if during the first hours nothing is happening. On Tuesday we have some Fed speaker but not really something that we can know about. On Wednesday we had again a very early Powell speech. We don't know if that's, what was it about? If it was about economy or what? And on sales, not really, not much. Then on Thursday we will have of course the jobless claims and durable good orders, non-defend good orders. We have PMIs. And PMIs, okay. This is not the right time, right? Yeah, actually it is. Okay, wait. Ah, okay. So the New York is actually opening at 1:30. So that's why we have a Powell speaking at 1:00. So this one at 5:00. It's actually very late. Yeah, it's usually starts 1 hour later than when I usually stop. Okay. Durable good orders. On Friday we have the PMIs. Postman sentiment. Okay, let's see. Okay, yeah. So for the next week we're going, is going to do that at normal 2:30. Yes, okay. So let's see how do we have here. Okay, still, I still can see the 1:30. So at least, at least for this one we have the full New York session. So now it is from 1:00 till 4:00 the actual New York session. But let's see. So now so far of course we have this small price action. It's already after the 8:20 AM Eastern and I will be looking for possible buys and sales obviously with the proper price action when I start to see the volume increasing. So for example now we are seeing the volume increasing. We are breaking these lows. Let's see. Okay, now we're staying consistently below that. So I'm also in the new 4-hour candle, almost at New York sorry change opening. Price is staying below, might take high risk, high reward and over there. That is bullish candle. But it would be a loss. Yes, immediately countered by. Buy this one. Now let's see the price action. If we stay above there. Or continue bearish. And, okay. Well, back to some bearish candles. Now we're at the 10 AM candle open. Let's see if we manage to break below these lows. Okay, we are breaking it, retesting it. Might take the second trade of the day even though the price action is not as smooth as we would love to. We might take this one. This is possible retest but we know that the price can possibly go and retest these lows before pushing down. So might be somewhat risky but it's actually a winning trade. Yeah. Very good. We took advantage of the push down at this candle. So that's absolutely good. Now let's see if we have a bullish correction. So well, if we have a continuation above this one. Might possibly take this one. Even though the volume is very, very slow, I would say. Still good. We are breaking above, staying above the key level. We just need a little push. And that's good. That's a winning trade. And we could also see it's now above this candle. Yeah, even entering after at above the key level. Would have been a winning trade by itself, safest entry. I'm not going to take it because I was in this trade at the time. But yeah, even the breaking retest of this level would bring us to profits. Now we're coming into London close. So no real, no other trades to be taken. Now let's see if it actually price action still gives us some interesting thing. Not going to trade it but simply to notice it. Okay, we have feeling to break. And yeah. Sketchy price action nonetheless. Okay, so. And the first day is over. 21st. Let's look at the 22nd. Uh, yes, New York open. What do we, did we have at the 22nd? Was it Tuesday? Okay, we had, uh, nothing. Some Fed speaker or some Richmond father in English at 10 AM. So let's see. It should be the 22nd. Okay, now that we have a strong price action, we might take for example this sell. Which will still be okay. But not now. Okay, let's see if now we have further continuation down. Or. Or we're breaking above. Okay. It looks like we're retesting this one on the upside. No real price action confirmation. Coming at 3 AM, 3 PM which is actually this Richmond index. I want to see a clean break retest of these lows to enter. This might be a very aggressive one. Price is staying below. And we will take the second entry of the day. It will still be okay because entry is above the key level, above the PPL. So it will still be okay. And yeah, I think it's already TP. Yeah, I think the TP has already been hit. Otherwise we would have further entry over there. Anyway, this is a win. Yes, we present is above the PPL. Otherwise we would have still had further entry confirmation. And let's see. Over here if we have further ones. Now we're coming at London close, so not taking any other entry. Uh, but yes. Look at the, yeah, strong, strong push. I'm not sure if I am looking something wrong. Yeah, it looks like that's the actual time. Okay. Probably maybe there was some Fed speaker at this time. Maybe yes, this, this speaker was, I don't know. So yeah, we, we still got part of the bearish push. Hmm, this one, there was no retest of the end of this level. Strong momentum, but yeah. Uh, let's see now, retest of nothing and. Yes, the volume dying down after London close. Still we got our win. So that's good. So let's move on. So 23rd, we had Powell speaking very early. If I'm not mistaken, yeah, at 1:00. I don't know if we have the screenshot that, that early. Yeah, okay. So Powell is already speaking over here. And I don't remember what was it about? If it was economy, policy, report or anything? So let's see now the simple price action. Yeah, okay. Price is staying below now. We are not retest, we have not retested these lows yet. So not really an entry. Might take a high risk, I would enter over here. Okay, price is failing to. To stay below, failing to break these lows. Yeah, so it's a loss. Okay. Now let's see if we can actually, we have break retesting this eyes. Or above this eyes. Okay, yeah, looks like this eyes. We didn't have a further retest of this level. What we add is the break and retest of this, this one. And the thing is that yeah, if you can see my pattern is that I need to know the outcome of my trade idea before taking it. And that's something that is not really good. Anyway, yeah, this is, this will be the entry. And it will pay out in around 1 hour, but it will go to profits. And then we come into London close and yeah, let's see the full correction. It's possible even taking the cells if we were trading right now. Taking these cells. Yeah, which would have been a loss. So thank God I'm not, I was allowed to trading because after my time. Okay, so now. Let's move on into Thursday. So the 24th. We had the jobless claims and we had some PMIs. So jobless claims at 1:30. Yeah, already happened, so, uh, because I didn't know that. So we had jobless claims improving quite a lot. And then we had double goods showing a huge decrease. Yeah, huge decrease. So it's quite a mixed data because these orders are very, very bad, but the jobless claims are very, very good. So we had a quite a mixed data. I don't know, maybe the price was above there, so I don't know where the price was starting from. So I might even pull up the chart after that just to see. But let's see now the price action simply from this point. Okay, let's see if we break above. We have these eyes, these lows. High risk, I would enter would have been over here. Breaking the last higher low. That would have been a very good entry. Let's see now at the break and retest of these lows. Yeah, that's a win. That was a win. So now let's see if we have a continuation or we are seeing a retest. And in a few minutes we have. Um. The PMIs. Okay. So the PMIs. Was coming in quite increase, quite good, I would say. So we should still be expecting a possible push down from gold. Yeah, actually it's not happening. We're seeing multiple bounces from this level. We might have a break and retest of these lows. Okay, break and retest of these eyes, sorry, and a correction on the upside. The breakout is not that strong, so I might take an entry here at the key level. I'm not sure that that would be a loss. Yeah, I have to check it, otherwise it is definitely a win. Break and retest of these eyes as well. Now it's a bit more combination. This one would be. Uh, it's 1, 2. I have to check it as well. Okay. Coming at the London close right now. So then we have further breakout, break above, break and retest of these eyes. Look at here. Okay, so let me check this one. So entry at the key level. Uh, 1949.2. This one will go. 1948. So it's still okay, it's still okay. So this one would have been a win. This one would have been a loss, I guess. So the entry was 1953. Uh. Yeah, we missed by a little beep, something like that. Okay. And then we would have had these wins afterwards, after New York, so after London close. So yeah, not going to take it, but that's, that's still good to know. The price action is here, that's strong volume. Know if we had anything. Maybe some speaker, yeah, both HP. Now let's go into Friday, the 25th. And we have Michigano consumer sentiment. And yeah, we're going to see the end of the week. The 25th. So now so far we're already in the new 4-hour. That's because I was not taking the screenshots from 1:00 PM but from 2:00 PM. Now let's see, we have these trade ideas. Okay. New York sorry change reacting at the key level. Let's see if we can now break above or below. Now we have also this retest of the key level, which is very interesting. It's the reaction of the last, at the last lows. Yeah, safe center would only be below these lows. 100%, but yeah, this one would have been a win. I don't know if we are going to have a retest of this area or possible continuation of sales. We like the level. Yes, so that would be a win even the key level. So we had this win and we had this win again. Now we are seeing the continuation down, below these lows. And we could have possible continuation. Yeah, now this one would actually be a loss. Now let's see if we are correcting and breaking above these eyes. Yes. If we were to take this entry, we would have lost this one. Yeah, but afterwards, yeah, it's after London close. So we close off the week with 2 wins and 2 losses, which is very, very good. And yeah, we close off the week. So let's continue with the next week since we are here and this was quite short. So yeah, it's the 28th of March. So on Monday we have some minor data. On Tuesday we have some minor data where the consumer confidence that we don't know and the jobless claims. Uh, Wednesday, 31st of March. We have the PCE and GDP and ADP claim. Thursday we have jobless claims and PCE. And then on Friday, the 1st of April, we're going to have the actual NFP. So this would be NFP week. Okay, so let's see. Coming from New York open. We have these lows, we have these eyes. We love to see some nice price action. Okay, so we don't have much, but we are seeing a strong, a lot of volume already. Not coming from any news. So I don't know if there was any headline, the price is already spiking up like 100 pips. So where we might enter is only like at this PSA, possible continuation. Otherwise we might see the full correction of this, this trade idea. Okay. Let's see if the price can break below these lows. It's a bit bouncing from there. But price from here would have been wins, but yeah, safest buy would only be above the key level. Let's see. If we can manage to break below, yeah, and retest it. Okay, and that would be at least a win. Very good. Now let's see the reaction at these lows. Okay. So far we are seeing a bounce, but we might see the continuation down. Yes, it would be the continuation back down. I mean into New York sorry change opening. And that would be a loss. Okay, so that would have been next one and possible loss. Okay. We have another set of buys above this level. Not really, I mean it's a 10 AM candle. We add this set of buys now playing out. This would play out. Uh, we had the customer confidence and the joy. Oh no, we don't have that, because it's not. This day. So now let's see if price action we might have breaks above this low, these eyes. Yes, nothing really happening after that. So it's actually a break even day. So 29th, we're coming to New York open. We have these previous eyes and we have these lows. Okay, lot of volume. What do we have on Tuesday? Customer confidence at 4:00, nothing really high impact during the early New York. So simple price action. Let's see if we get a retest of these lows. Yeah, or the continuation now. We got actually the retest of this one. Wait, after breaking below, a possible entry. Now. Below these lows. Yeah, this one would have been an immediate loss. Let's see if we have a possible continue, a retest and continuation down. Yes. This one. Whether we test and fail to break, let's see if we have continuation down or we might have the retracement on the upside. Okay. In this case, if we were to enter, we would have lost over here. Now let's see if we have another set over there. Coming into New York sorry change opening, we're at the 4:00, we have some bigger reports. Okay. So let's see if we have a retest of these eyes. We had only the retest of the key level. And this previous eyes on the left. Ah, we actually had the retest of this, this one. Which was pretty, pretty damn good. But yeah, the key level and this area, these eyes gave us a good entry point for a win. And I don't know about the news, so. Let me check the results. Uh, so yes. Let's see now if we have a possible continuation buys above this one or the retest of these eyes. With the new 10 AM candle opening. Which we're going to see in the next screenshot most likely. Unless the price action is really dying down. So 3 wins, 2 losses is absolutely good. And let's continue. Let's see what's the next screenshot. Yes, so it's after 10 AM. So we were looking after this price action. With the year or above there. Yeah, now this lows. Okay, so we had the breakout above there. And the continuation up. We are retesting. This top week, but only now. So that might be a late entry. After this strong rejection, I don't know if I would enter straight away. Yeah, that would leave in a win anyway. Because we are retesting this top week. Now our next set of buys would only be above here. Because I would love to have, uh. To see more volume and momentum after London close. We might even see some high risk, I would sense playing out. Okay. Which would not be. Yeah, and the volume is simply dying down. So, uh. Okay. So now let's continue to the next one. So we're coming into Wednesday. What did we, okay, on Wednesday we have the ADP very early. And some good news, some news at 8:30. So let's see, ADP is coming up better than expected by lower than previous one. And, uh. PC coming the same, GDP. Wow, the previous one was revised down from 7 to 2. PC, this one still increasing, so it looks like this one might be very bullish for gold, very bearish. Let's see, so, uh, we have the ADP coming up over here. We didn't have any retest of this, uh, eyes, so now what we want to see is either a retest of the key level or continuation up, or retest of this top week. Okay. Now we're waiting of course for the 8:20, for the 8:30 GDP and PC uh, data coming up, which is over here, so so far we are seeing a slow volume, not much of a direction. So I will still only look for buys mainly above this area. And sell below, over there. Simply as per market structure and price action. Okay. Within your stock exchange, we might have this entry taken. And which would go to profits. Very good. Next set of buys only above these eyes. It's getting quite late, but yeah, even if you want to seem to take this entry, not much of a volume, but we might see a continuation up to the key level. And yeah, that would be a win. Okay, very, very smooth, very slow, I would say, but still giving us the trade ideas, now we're coming into, uh, Thursday. The day before the, uh, NFP, we have the jobless claims coming up, and, uh, did we have something else? Uh, jobless game, I think, or PCE. Okay. So jobless claims are coming up, um, more than expected. PCE is coming lower than expected, lower than expected, but still higher than previous one. So I want to see what is, uh, going to be the reaction from the markets at the data release, which is around here. Uh, mainly because we, it looks like it's a mixed data, from the jobless claims, it's quite bad, but from the, uh, also the PC might be mixed data, because it's between the expected, lower than expected, but still higher than previous one. So let's see now, the reaction from the market. Are we breaking above, are we testing it? Okay, yeah, and it's going to be a win. Now, as always, next set of buys would only be, might also be already over here. Even though it's actually when I get mighty pain, so we probably miss it live. Yeah, and it will also be very sketchy price action, um. Yes, and I mean, now a set of buys will only be above there. Sales, possible high risk, I would sell, so below these lows. I want to see more volume, but also we have tomorrow NFP, so we might even simply go to go like this, yes. The volume simply didn't show up. Okay. So now we are moving into the actual NFP, so let, let me, uh, change this. Okay. So this is the 1st of April. Okay, NFP is coming up, I said, right here, so now we're going to see a very bad NFP, so expecting a strong push on gold. Unemployment rate is still improving, so might be a mixed data so far, but yeah, let's see. We are seeing for the news. Okay, not much of a reaction yet, I would say. Weird, um, yes, quite weird, but I will only turn out these safe entries. Okay, possible continuation up from this low, from these eyes. Would be a loss. Fake out rejection, let's see if it goes to the other side. Yes, it breaks below and stays below. This would be a win, we are also retesting this previous lows. Okay. So in this case, that would be a loss, if we are taking this retest based on the last low, which is what we were looking for, this would be a win. Otherwise, if we are taking below, that will, it will be a loss, so next set of sales. Only be below there, possible buys, possible buys. Like here. Okay, which would be a win. Yeah, I might also take this one as a loss, because actually, uh, this happened after I take my win. Anyway. Uh, and this would be a win, now let's see above these eyes. Okay, coming at the 10am candle, we are also bouncing multiple times against the key level. So we might have possible high risk, I would sell below this level. No really strong closures, now we have some more volume, we'll have some PMIs. Which are coming up, uh, mixed data, a little bit bad, I would say. But are definitely mixed. So let's see what is the action of the market, prices staying below, but not retesting any PSA. But this is a strong retest, this is actually, actually a good entry. Retesting this area on the left. For continuation, win, 1, 2, 3, yes, so that would actually be the end of the, uh, the week. So that would be 23 minus 18, 27, 4. What, okay, so now that would be actually a loss. Good, so, uh, this was it for the Friday, I would say. Yes, I hope you guys enjoyed, and I'll see you next time.